Okay, we'll call the meeting to order.
Jean Fox?
Yeah.
Steve Owen?
Here.
Sherri Barron?
Yeah.
Jennifer Plum?
Here.
Bob Clark?
Yeah.
Laura Ramston?
Here.
Ms. Sankwitz?
Here.
Steve Sylvia?
Here.
And Lake Cam's recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Some of us had to look for the flag.
We need bigger flags.
We're also going to ask your indulgence a little bit. We're going to ask for public participation first, go to our students, and then take a few things out of order. First of all, we have an incoming superintendent we want to talk about briefly, and then we would take the other stuff quickly and then put the budget at the end. So it won't take that long, I promise, but that's kind of what we'd like to do if everyone's okay with that. Great. So, public participation. Okay, great. So we can go right to our students. Thank you for being here and thank you for your patience this evening.
Hi, everyone. So 16 students have qualified for the national championship in Atlanta, Georgia, and Ella Fisher now joins Liam McPhail as her second state representative. Also, grades close on April 1st, and the seniors will enter their final stretch. Seniors will receive all information for events such as prom, senior banquet, and graduation at their April 4th meeting. They will also have an Easter egg hunt on April 13th in their last ever pep rally. We also have Uponaquit hosting their third career day on April 8th. Grades 9 to 11 will attend three small group career presentations determined by interest survey.
This week, school sports started back up, and also this week, grade 10 students had English MCAS on Tuesday and Wednesday, and will complete the MCAS testing with math in May. Seniors will receive the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship at a ceremony next month. The award recipients get a free tuition to any Massachusetts college or university. We will be bringing back Uponaquit Mad Night, which is like a talent night, and it will be renamed and introduced to the students for a scheduled early May date. Also, the Uponaquit players are hosting Legally Blonde the Musical, and that will air three nights beginning on April 7th.
You guys are reading all that stuff on those tiny little screens.
With mismatched socks.
I love the socks, too.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's an exciting time for all of you, I'm sure, as you gravitate right now towards the end of the school year, and then looking forward to the next one. So, thank you. And you don't have to hang with us. We're happy to hear you.
Thanks, great job. You're welcome. Have a good one.
Thank you. We'll do ahead the minutes, okay?
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You, too.
Good night. Socks are really kind. Let's move on to acceptance of minutes. We have, oh, the 9th, March 9th.
So moved.
Thanks. All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Executive session minutes of the same date?
So moved, so make sure that we keep them aside till after negotiations, right?
We're about there, but that's what we're going to do. Yep, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We're going to move the budget to the back. We're going to go right here to our new, almost superintendent. Mr. Alan Strauss has successfully concluded negotiations, and we have voted to sign the contract with Mr. Strauss, and we're going to do that now in public. So if I could have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Mr. Strauss.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call vote.
Aye. Roll call vote, I apologize.
That's okay. Jean Fox?
Yes.
Steve Owen?
Yes.
Sherri Barron?
Yes.
Jennifer Plum?
Yes.
Bob Clark?
Yes.
Laura Ramston? Yes.
Ms. Sankwitz? Steve Sylvia?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, I will. Yeah, we got three of these to sign with everybody sitting.
We started sending them down the row, so just sign and send them.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Strauss, good luck, as I said.
He had hair.
He had hair, he started with us, so.
No problem.
No, we're happy to have you here, thank you. I know it's a grueling process,
I'm excited.
but you have one of the best mentors in the whole world right next to you, right there, to get you through. So, let's do old business, FY '22 budget report, Ms. Lee's.
Yes, good evening. Included in your packet is your general fund overview for FY '22, year-to-date, through March 23rd, I'm sorry, through March 16th, 2022. Our revenues year-to-date are $25.9 million. An expenditure budget balance after encumbrances or open purchase orders is $4.2 million. So far, our spending is on trend for a normal year. We are anticipating, you know, good results, normal results, based on our experience year-to-date. However, we are watching some various accounts at this time. We are continuing to monitor them over the spring. Some examples are utilities, overtime costs for snow removal, and cost for substitutes. To date, I feel we will have adequate salary savings to cover any of these possible shortfalls. And as it relates to the FY '22 assessment sheet, there are no updates at this time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Lee's? Okay. We'll go into the updates from you.
Yeah, don't have any DESI guideline updates. We should all applaud that right off the bat, right, relative to the fact that I don't have any new, breaking news. I don't have any updates, Mr. Sylvia, on the test kits either. They just keep piling up. I, yeah, I voted less, but.
No conversations about ending.
There have been no conversations relative to what they're going to do with those test kits other than we continue to provide them, obviously, for those families and students. I provided you a COVID report number, and you could see the trend clearly continues to head. We have, we've had three positive cases this week in the district. If you look at the last two to three weeks since we've returned in February, if you look at the Lakeville and Freetown numbers, consistently, you know, in regard to a safe reopening, I don't have any more details to share. I'll continue to provide you the weekly reports and so forth, but at this point, it looks like we are right on target and trending in the right direction in relation to where we're at for the two communities. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions, but we continue to provide that option for masks to be worn, and it's been supported, and we've had no issues whatsoever relative to the students or staff participation.
Trending in the right direction. Okay, we have under new business, DUCs, international careers.
Yes, I'm actually presenting. So the students were were willing to come again, and I told them I did not think that was necessary. This board has been very supportive of the state conference, now this is simply an extension. So it is my recommendation to support the upcoming national conference trip as presented.
To Atlanta, Georgia.
Second.
Okay, great. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have our director's reports, but we also have a director.
Want to start with Ms. Lee's?
Yeah.
So, in tonight's report, I have included a summary of the budget changes as well as future dates. And as reflected in tonight's presentation for the budget presentation, you'll see that we have updated our budget model and assessment sheet for FY '23 for two significant changes. The first relates to Chapter 71 transportation revenues, and the second relates to health insurance estimated expenditures. And I'll just go over those briefly. As it relates to Chapter 71 transportation revenues, our original budget model included a reimbursement rate of 73%. We have now increased that to an 80% reimbursement rate based upon information we received from the Commonwealth. As a result, we were able to increase our anticipated revenues by $149,242 to a new estimate of $1,613,520. And for health insurance expenditures, our original budget model included an anticipated rate increase of 7.5%, which actually equates to the same as medical inflation. However, our bid results this year yielded a very favorable renewal quote of 1.2% to our traditional PPO and HMO plans. This renewal rate does not include any benefit or plan design changes. The plans would be identical to the current offering. This results in an estimated budgetary savings of $364,540. And of course, these two adjustments would impact the assessments to each of our towns. Freetown's assessment requested would be adjusted to $13,106,655, an increase over FY '22's budget by $768,614, or 6.23%. The assessment had been reduced by $223,994 from our original budget model. And Lakeville's assessment requested would be adjusted to $16,295,504, an increase over FY '22's budget by $536,821, or 3.41%. And Lakeville's assessment had been reduced by $289,787 from our original budget model. As we move forward, we will be noting any changes as the governor's budget works through the legislative approval process. Upcoming dates are April 6th, where we will request the school committee's official vote on our budget. May 16th is the town of Lakeville's annual meeting, and June 6th is the town of Freetown annual meeting. And recently, the superintendent and I did meet with both town administrators, both Freetown and Lakeville, last week just to guide them through a summary of the contents of the budget book. And Regional FinCom, they'd be requesting sometime between now and April 6th. Additionally, in your packets is an update for the MSBA project.
Oh, I got on to that call.
Did you, did you want to ask?
What was the feedback with the town administrators? Was it?
Oh.
So, the initial feedback was positive in relation to the financial figures. Freetown is still pulling together their budget, so I do think that they might need a little more, you know, time to really look at all the numbers as they all come together. I'm going to be working with the town administrator, walking her through the assessment sheet line by line, and I think hopefully, once Freetown gets a better feeling for the assessment process and how that translates through the model, I think that will be, will be in a favorable place.
Thank you.
And she's here tonight to.
General, I need you to, yeah, very, very good. I think they will have support in town. I would just feel we try to guard.
That's right.
The process, and this is so amazing, and able to explain to me, so I'm taking advantage of that. So, yeah, I don't foresee, I don't foresee an issue really, but I'm just trying to.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Ms. Barron?
It's nice to hear that compliment from Freetown because the Lakeville Board of Selectment met on Monday night. I watched the meeting.
Yeah.
Live, and they were very complimentary of the administration and of Ms. Lee's, so.
Oh, good.
Good job. Nice job.
Thank you.
Can't wait to meet that Ms. Lee's, I'll tell you.
And to move forward on the MSBA update, so an update on the Astewamse Elementary School MSBA project. Yesterday, there was an accelerated repair orientation where MSBA went over the process of securing contracts and working with our OPM and designers. We are awaiting the initial contract for our owner's project manager. Once that is set, the OPM will help us execute the contract with the designer. The contracts must be in place by April 10th of this year, as well as filing an existing building information checklist. The OPM, once officially contracted with the district, will provide us with detailed milestone checklist, which I believe, based on original conversations, have a target date for construction in the spring to summer 2023 timeframe. It is important to note that there is a 20- to 25-week lead time on order of products for windows and doors based on our initial conversations with the OPM, so all of that will be taken into account. And in regards to the universal free school lunch, you'll see in your packet that the federal government did not include coverage of school lunches in a spending bill introduced the week of March 9th. As a result, it appears the universal free meals are slated to end on June 30th, 2022. It would then be anticipated that families would expect to resume to the free lunch, free and reduced application process in order to qualify for relief on lunch costs. And as it currently stands, if we were to have rates charged, rates for next year's lunch would cost $3 for full price for reduced 40 cents. For breakfast, $1.50 for full price and 30 cents for reduced. And as a district, we are exploring avenues, particularly first looking at maybe the breakfast program to see what the financial ramifications would be if we offered a free program for breakfast.
Just don't want to get a question regarding the MSBA.
Is there, I just wanted to make sure I had from the last question, if this slides based upon supply, that we can't do it to the summer of '24, is any implication to that?
I don't believe so.
Somebody raised that question. I was actually, I chimed into that, and somebody raised that very question, the supply chain issue.
Sure.
And they said case by case, didn't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Sylvia?
Just on the lunch program, I know, I think we have a legislative liaison. Is there anything in Massachusetts pending in the legislature here? I see the exceptions at California and Maine, there's nothing at this point.
No, they have not, in my discussions with Ways and Means, there is not.
Okay, that's interesting.
And then the last item, if I could report, we do have a letter included in the packet, a letter to the town of Freetown, where we expressed an official notice of interest for a vehicle that they may be looking to consider surplus. We did request both towns consider if they have any surplus to assist our facilities department with any vehicles that they need.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No.
Is there a particular reason why Freetown is marking this as surplus? My fear is you take on an old vehicle, you're now taking on all the maintenance costs that goes along with it, right?
So, our facilities director looked at the vehicle in person.
Okay.
And he's satisfied, he's actually quite excited about the vehicle. It's just that Freetown had one slated on their budget for a new vehicle.
I think the magnitude of the work that's expected of the town and campus is a little different, so I think.
Oh, that's true.
So, I'd like to thank both towns, and in particular, Freetown, for considering this request.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Carlin?
Thank you. Couple of special ed updates tonight. For our pre-K, the pre-K application process for the integrated pre-K at FES has concluded. We have a full roster for peer models for the program for fall, with a waiting list at both the three-year-old and four-year-old level. All families have been notified of their child's enrollment status. For our extended school year, we're currently staffing for the program, which starts on July 5th. We will likely need to expand our search to school spring as the applications have been limited thus far. They typically trickle in, however, they're just, they seem to be very slow. So we will continue to monitor that in the next, you know, week, weeks. By early April, communication and enrollment forms will be sent out to the families of eligible students, and we will start that process of the staffing and class rosters, et cetera. Transition planning is also underway for students transitioning to new schools in the fall. This includes in-district students moving up levels, as well as students who will attend one of the VOG schools. The meetings for transition are being scheduled for May and June, and as in past years, we're taking a personalized approach to the transition process to ensure a smooth transition for our students in the fall. For our DESI update, tiered focus monitoring self-assessment, fun is still ongoing with a final report due to the state on May 17th. And lastly, just for some of the grants that are specific to students with disabilities, I just wanted to highlight a few of the items that we were able to purchase for our students and faculty, and we did receive an unexpected small bump from the state last week. Just to let you know, I know that we'd previously spoken about the 50 iPads. We also purchased protective cases to support, you know, communication and academics for students with disabilities. We also, through working with the technology department, came up with a service contract, which is going to help with updates and applications, especially for students who use the devices for speech and communication. We were also able to purchase a number of specialized sensory equipment and swings, and specialized pre-K and elementary educational materials and supplies. Lastly, I know that Dr. Jablinski mentioned Promethean boards. We were able to purchase 14 Promethean boards for specific to special education classrooms. And finally, I've updated the out-of-district enrollment census.
Questions?
What is, how many pre-K students are we taking?
I don't have the exact breakdown in terms of the, I can get that for you. It's a percentage of the peer models, and then we have got to leave sort of opening space for the students with disabilities because they are evaluated 10 months out of the year.
And how big is the waitlist you've approximately?
That I do have. So, for the three-year-olds, there's a waiting list of 14. For the four-year-olds, there's a waiting list of 30. That is, it's typical, however, the three-year-olds get first, you know, will typically slide up to the fourth-grade slots. There are not very many fourth-grade slots.
Is there?
Excuse me, four-year-old slots.
Okay, got it, thank you. Is there potential of adding another, I'm going to say classroom without knowing the correct terminology here, especially with such a big waitlist?
Well, that would involve a lot of different issues with staffing, spacing, classrooms.
We don't project that to be the case. These numbers are pretty consistent, what we've had year to year to meet the needs. Typically have a preschool program. I think there are 48 students currently in the program, currently at Freetown Elementary School, which houses our preschool program. Just to give you an idea, it's typically a 50, 50 number for the, for the program. And it seems to meet the needs of the piece, but certainly we could entertain, look at more staff. It would require some additional classroom spacing, which we could make available at the school, though. It's not something that couldn't be looked at, but we don't feel the need is there at this time.
Well, they do have nice classrooms for these programs, really nice classrooms.
This is a fee-based enrollment, right?
Yes, it is. It is. Okay.
Dr. Jablinski's report is included. I don't have additional comments in relation to that. Dr. Jablinski unfortunately was delayed in returning, so her visit was scheduled to be here tonight, and unfortunately, out of her control, was unable to be here, so. But if there are specific questions, you can see me or, or send Pat a note to address those.
Yeah, hers was pretty brief until the point, yeah. Any subcommittee updates before we move on to the budget?
No, I was, I'm sorry, Rick, yeah, you were probably thinking the same way.
No, I knew, I knew you were going to reference the Freetown one, just the Wellness Health Committee meets in June. And Sherri represents that, and Will, I think you probably want to comment on that.
Yeah, again, I know I said at the last meeting, March 28th, there is an informational meeting at the police station, I believe, at 6 o'clock. Just an informational, in nature, just talking about the new building project for Bristol-Phlemmons, so. Just want to continue getting that out to the towns. I know Sankwitz said to be there. I'll be present as well. I'll be there, yeah. We currently have 36 applicants that were interviewed for the position, but they don't make that determination until late April. I think I mentioned that at the last meeting. Yeah. Thanks, Rick.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on. He's already moving on, that's good.
The good news is Ms. Lee's covered like four slides, so I was wondering if Mr. Clark is on, who's going to mention that. Hopefully, Rick brings, you know, speeds it up a little bit with the process, so. Seth, Deb, thanks. Thanks for being so patient today. I know you're here primarily for this, but you got to see the full, the full gamut. Mrs. Fox, I will roll right into this. I cannot believe this is my eighth and final annual budget hearing for the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District. It's been an honor, and I think it's fitting that this year may be the smoothest brief annual hearing that we have had. We already have town officials and folks on board, and so as a result, I promise you, I will keep the slideshow and presentation short. I do know that Lake Cam obviously makes this available for the community at large, and then we'll put it up on the website. But as you can see, the first individuals I'd like to recognize, especially where we may, we have an election coming up, are all the following folks, right? I think the continuity, the continuity and the consistency really of leadership has often been commented, but that starts right at the school committee level. So, I'd like to thank the regional committee for their support of this practice rolling from that. You see the, the school committee. I would then like to recognize the leadership team, right? It is through these folks, through the staff, which is the backbone of this, of the school district, the successful school district that carries us forward. As you go beyond that piece, I think the focus has been, and some of you have heard this same speech from me from year to year, but a budget's going to reflect your priorities, and so it is so important. And we start always with a mission statement, which is our commitment to provide each student a high-quality, relevant education that promotes academic success, well-being, and responsible citizens. I probably should underline well-being and responsible citizens these past couple, with these past couple of years, right? In relation to so many things going beyond just the test scores and so, so forth with our, with our stakeholders. But we are very excited and feel that this budget supports the mission of this district. Couple of references that I've already made. It is so critical as you look at the numbers, and our Director of Finance does a phenomenal job with, with the detail, but to remember that your budget and your numbers should be a reflection of your priorities, right? So if you think something's important, you should support that with the necessary resources, and I think this budget does that. It's continuing to move this. I'm going to have a few more opportunities in these coming months before Mr. Strauss takes over to, to remind you of raising the bar and really making sure that we're not a complacent school district, that we don't allow good to get in the way of great. And I think Alan's going to take it to that next level. I am really excited to, and I feel good and comfortable on the fact that I think I've built with your support and help a foundation for future success. I think you'll see it evident here, even with the kind of a level service budget. It's so important to remember that if the district stays focused on that mission statement, on that strategic plan, on those goals, on the individual accountability, we're going to meet the challenges for all our kids, and we're going to meet them individually and successfully, and we're going to do it passionately and joyfully. It's interesting, through the interview process earlier today, I'm reminded of that, why we're all here. We're in this because it is an educational plan for students supported by our community, and I think that's what you'll see reflected as we start to get into some of the numbers here. Now, some of the assumptions that have been made in this budget, and it's critical, and I'll try to just give a couple of highlights that Ms. Lee's referenced earlier. State aid, obviously, we're looking at that $30 per pupil increase, and you see what the number is there. There is some discussion at the state level of that number increasing. I think it's unlikely, folks, quite candidly, that we will see increased Chapter 70. I think we're one of about 125 school districts that would fall into that same category, so they'd have to kind of give that support. So I anticipate the number you see here for state aid to be, to be the same and reflect a slight increase in the current budget number. What we were pleased to hear, and we incorporated that, is the increase in regional transportation to kind of that 80%. Of course, for those folks that were here even prior to me, when regionalization came about, it was supposed to be met at 100%, right, and they still haven't gotten there, but at least I feel we've made some progress in relation, and you see the increase. What I think is important, and you see the circuit baker increase that's more reflective of our student needs and population more than anything. Negotiations are ongoing with several collective bargaining units, and we've incorporated what we project to be the necessary resources for those contractual obligations. We had some great news, as Ms. Lee's referenced earlier, about our health insurance costs. We're going to see just a slight increase of 1.2. We don't have the premium holiday, which is one paid holiday incorporated. We knew that, we received that last year. We don't see that reflected, but when you think about the initial budget presentation that I made not too long ago. the initial budget presentation that I made not too long ago, we were looking at about a 7% increase. So we significantly, not only are going to be able to offer to our employees and our retirees the same health benefits, but we're actually enhancing those packages a little bit to offer some potential look at vision and dental as well. So I think in general, where you, where so much of it's about our employees, they should feel good as it relates, and it has not been a budget buster as it relates to that piece. So those two adjustments, I think it's critical as we look at the assessment, we made sure that was reflected in the assessment and certainly negated some costs to the town. Utility costs are trending upward, right? I don't think anybody who's filling up their gas and oil needs to be reminded of that, I don't see that, but we did make some significant offsets through projected savings from the energy improvements that we made, right? We really were ahead of the curve. When you consider, if you look at what train is promoting and providing and asking to be a part of, we were already ahead of that piece in relation to the pandemic, and so many of the initiatives that we've taken at no cost, I remind, Freetown and Lakeville, no cost, we built it into the operational, so those savings help pay for our utilities. And in the second year of a performance contract, and in spite of the pandemic, we've had to maybe adjust and look at those numbers, we still feel that those assumptions will lead to the numbers that I'm going to, you know, continue with right now as it relates to our budget. Typically, there's a drumroll, but a lot of the towns already know these numbers, and we've been real transparent about that and applauded, and I appreciate boards of both Freetown and Lakeville being very public about the interaction that we've had with certainly Deb being present tonight for Freetown, but also Lakeville. We've had a continued dialogue, Mr. Owen may even chuckle, this is the Chair of the Regional Finance Committee. There was a, there was a time where Regional Finance Committee struggled with a productive means, right? There was a question whether we needed to meet because we weren't accomplishing anything. Well, that's changed, we got the Regional FinCom Board, we have a unique issue this year in which that we've had such support and such dialogue, we haven't had a required meeting because the town officials have our budget books, have it? We've answered their questions, we've done some things virtually with them. And so we will certainly offer that opportunity as the budget is presented tonight publicly for the first time. Obviously, it'll be voted on at the next school committee meeting, and that's critical, it allows the public to ask questions tonight, but also understand that between now and then, if they need to speak to school committee members, school committee members will not take formal action or vote this budget in until the next school committee meeting, which is April 6th. So as you can see, the budget that is recommended didn't change. I would say the first time in, now I'm really going to date myself, and there's a reason, when the kids were doing their phones, I was so nice to see Mrs. Fox reference that. I know it's time, after 35 years of education, because I'm looking and I'm saying, I cannot believe the kids are reading the report off the phone, as I'm getting ready to have my glasses on, thinking this is in this font. But what I think is incredible is in my 18 years as superintendent, two communities, I have never, never presented an initial budget and not had to adjust that. That's what you see tonight. And I think it's a reflection of us doing our due diligence, of this community supporting us, of us being fiscally responsible, but also creating such a foundation that we feel good that we can move forward with numbers that are being supported. So the recommended budget tonight is $43,340,701. You see the budget from last year, which was voted on and supported, it's an increase of $1.5 million or a 3.62% increase. Now, typically, the towns don't necessarily get too worked up about this slide, it's the next slide, right? It's the assessment sheet, because just so the public knows, and I know LangCam is producing this, the budget number is extremely important, but from a town perspective, whether it be Finance Committee, Board of Selectment, or taxpayer, it's what it's costing taxpayers. And here are the percentages and numbers, the assessment, well, how it's being assessed as it relates to the wealth in the community as been identified by the state. As you can see, the assessment for Freetown is listed there of $13,106,655. Lakeville, $16,295,504. You can see the adjustment and shift, but please note, the shift is also a result of minimum local contribution in the Chapter 70 model, meaning that there's some adjustments made in the formula as it relates to the wealth defined by the state for each town that impacts this. You can see the increase. I'm looking at a different number, I'm looking at that number there, just the three there thrown off, I apologize, just kind of carried over on the slide for some reason. My sheet, hopefully you have a hard copy, it looks much nicer on the sheet here, it's showing the dollar amount there. And you can see in Lakeville, it's a 3.41% increase, and in Freetown, a 6.23 percentage increase. So, Kara, am I missing something? I'm going to stop, no, we're good, just looking at that slideshow, it's driving her crazy that that was the place, so. Next time, we'll kind of go through that one more. But the reality is the numbers are consistent. The adjustment made in that percentage increase, and Deb will realize this as we meet with the town officials in Freetown, are more reflective of the shift and what the contribution requirement is for the town. It's more of a definition of the essential wealth of the town as categorized by the state than it is for our dollar amounts. So that's the assessment sheet. As we look to the budget increases, again, keep in mind, we are the largest department in Freetown and Lakeville, you're talking over 400 employees, it's inevitable that your salaries are going to carry the most weight as it relates. But I also, as I referenced earlier, want to remind folks, the backbone of this successful organization is in fact the individuals, is, are our teachers, our custodians, our paraprofessionals, our clerical, our administrators. So it's not surprising that you see the salary increase of 2.28% increase is the highest budget increase cost there. You will see a reduction in supplies and textbooks, we have level service textbooks and supplies, and we're actually using some available grant money, so I don't want to mislead people, have people thinking, wow, the resources that our kids need in the classroom, we're depleting that, we're not, no, we're still on target as it relates, we're just using some creative and additional alternative funding to address some of those moving forward. The insurance has been reflected, technology, really, we've really made a huge investment as it relates to technology for our hybrid learning and our continued learning moving forward. Facilities are listed there and right on down the line. So you can see the breakdown, I won't, I won't read it line by line as it relates to the total, but it is a budget increase of 3.62%. How does that match up for the past four years? It's pretty much in line with that. If you look back to '20, we had a 4.61% last couple of years, made some adjustments certainly during the pandemic and COVID piece, but you can see our budget is certainly in line with that. Keeping in mind, most of the towns are looking at it as to what's the cost to us relative to the assessment. The next slide is our employee salary breakdown. Keep in mind that that increase reflects step and schedule increases, ongoing collective bargaining underway, and some assumptions that we've made, a small percentage of retirements, I think we were just having that discussion with my administrative assistant, the new superintendent, this earlier, this evening, approximately 10 retirements, 10 projected retirements that we were able to incorporate into this budget. A minimum wage increase, anybody quiz, minimum wage? Massachusetts? $14.25, not all school districts have taken that, we've made sure, we've made that adjustment. And the next projected one?
15.
There we go, so what, a very good graduate-level course that, and group that you're taking, that Mr. Strauss you're involved with, 15. And we've made those adjustments. And I think it's important to note, we did not feel that in any position in this organization, supported by the school board, that we should be paying for folks under minimum wage. So we made that adjustment. Some districts have chosen to do it at the end of the year or a year out, we've made those adjustments in advance. So we have met the challenge of 1425, and likewise, we'll have to incorporate the future adjustment to $15, which I believe is January 1 of 2023. And then last, and certainly not least, because this committee would make sure, be remiss if I didn't reference the continued emphasis and priority on class size and meeting the increased enrollment needs at both of our K to 3, pre-K to 3 at FES, and K to 3 in Lakeville, that swampsit enrollment. So that is the ones, that is the one area where we've added staff in the budget for this year. One additional elementary teacher, please note that the grade has not been identified, the principals have kind of did a placeholder for that, but typically, you take a look at that kindergarten and then make an adjustment accordingly. But it's one additional classroom teacher at each of those grades. That does not preclude, and again, this is a kind of a 15-minute budget presentation, some of the other interventionists and other pieces that have been built in through grants that are going to support our kids moving forward. But the budget salary increases that you see reflected there include those two teachers and remain in our budget moving forward. Health insurance, which was, has been noted on more than one occasion, this includes employees, retirees, so keep in mind, the regional district does inherit retirees. So something I've kind of picked up on maybe with a little bit more astute knowledge with my glasses these days, because I fall into a different category soon, and a choice of coverage. And that number's going to continue to grow, though, in all seriousness, from a burden perspective, right? As the district grows and has longevity, you're going to see more and more individuals have those retiree benefits and that's incorporated into the health insurance, and there's a package piece built in there. But you can see the numbers, really through the due diligence of the Director of Finance and some consultants and some work we've done, we've been very aggressive to go out to bid for the last two years, Kara? Which had not historically been the case, if you can go back to Mr. Baker days, we had some conversation, a former Director of Finance, and then Ms. Loeb's, there was always a conversation about, should we be doing that? Well, we've done it the last two years, and it has paid dividends as it relates to the competitive nature and the response we've received. Now, again, fortunately, I think for our employees and retirees, we didn't have to make significant changes, but we were able to certainly adjust and make some significant savings for our health insurance moving forward, which usually has a crippling impact if you don't do that on a school budget, right? Because you're taking that from somewhere else and sometimes lessening your priorities. The next slide is on transportation, both regular education and special education. Please note, we did add one bus in 2022. We had two buses that were there previous, so we had reduced, and you can see the adjustment there, so there is a slight increase. Kara, I don't know if you have any reference in specific to those transportations, that does take into account fuel adjustments as well.
That is correct, fuel adjustments and also cleaning of buses.
I will say this, I know that the Special Education Office has worked closely with the Director of Finance as it relates to providing some out-of-district transportation needs, so we're looking at a potential new vendor secured, which will be a cost savings. In addition, it's a little bit closer to home vendor, so we feel good about the services we're going to be able to provide for our kids and also at a savings. So again, I know transportation is something I believe this district and certainly my successors take a look at, especially in regular transportation. And I couldn't go through a public hearing without saying that, without at least Mr. Owen making eye contact with me in relation to those buses and transportation in my last process. It is something, it is something. It is something, though, I think, that's so significant, our kids, you know, our communities are just so large, and I think it's so important that we continue to revisit providing a solid transportation option for all our kids that say. The next item is capital, see if I'm on the slide here, no, I'll go right to that. So the capital debt, again, great news once again for us, right? We're slowly bringing things off. If you can see in FY '21, paid off the athletic facilities, FY '22, paid off the pool ban. This includes, or that number now includes, the pool track, tennis courts, grays, and the middle school. And you can see, obviously, that that number helps us moving forward. The next slide is special education. Ms. Curlin made reference to this a little bit earlier, you're looking at, you're looking at general fund, you're looking at circuit breaker, and then obviously grants and preschool, and you can see the dollar amount, significant money, just keep in mind comparison, special education, $11 million cost there, when you consider our budget's $43 million, right? Just in comparison, big picture, as it relates to that, circuit breaker and grants are subject, obviously, to state funding. The grants include the American Rescue Fund of $155,000, and also the early childhood grant as well. And then the next, I want to say five or six slides, I'm not going to go through all of them at length, but it really does show the enrollment attendance and a variety of things happening. This is a special education enrollment history, it's broken down, I don't know how well you can see that, but on the far left of the slide is pre-K to 5, right? So those are our three elementary schools, then you see the middle school, and then from left to right is obviously the past four years, FY '19 through '22, grade nine to 12, and then out-of-district. The numbers of our out-of-district continue to remain low. I think there have been quite a few referrals this year, Ms. Curlin, right? I think this is not shocking based on gaps, I think we've seen an uptick in relation to concerns parents have, and so there may be some adjustments moving forward as you look at FY '23 and '24, and I think that's more reflective of the times as it relates to where we're at in needs, or at least parents perceive needs as it relates to maybe potential gaps with their children. The E and D, so thankfully, I've stayed around long enough, I don't know, is that the eight years right there? I'm looking at the chart there, so. So I'd love to take some credit as superintendent and say, we are in a much better place, but if I'm going to do that, I have to look at where we started out, and then I guess I should have taken the criticism and write 17, 18, 19, and many of the board members were here. We were taking advantage of available funds to offset operational costs, right? And we recognized that that was not a strategy that could be sustained for the future success of our schools, and I give the school committee, supported by town officials, a ton of credit for understanding that we couldn't, we needed to establish this E and D in the event that we had one-time costs in our needs, so we wouldn't need to continue going back to the town, whether it relates to special education costs or capital needs. And I think we've done a phenomenal job of that. We are at for FY '22 certified dollar amount of $1,856,194. We will consider, as we do with school choice revenue and E and D piece, look to, you know, support our budget as it relates, but clearly, going back to those years, we were building that into that assessment, and we really realized that that's not a way to go, and I think, I feel very good leaving this year with this savings account, if you will, for those of you that aren't really familiar with regional school districts, that is in fact what the excess and deficiency allows a school board to take a look at within the constraints and parameters of how you can use those monies. And I really have to give a ton of credit to the school board, because you folks were adamant about getting that to a point where you could sustain educational needs of our kids and provide resources and not have to create special town meetings and been going back asking for additional funds, which is a pretty typical response for cities and towns and schools, right? Public schools to go back if in fact the budget's been created and you need funding. We feel we have some mechanisms in place where that's not necessary, and obviously, this reflects the fact that we're in a much better place financially than we've been in some time. District enrollment, this is a real challenging piece, I can go back to, at least I can think of one town official who would always like to comment on class size and enrollment in a town that were nameless that I won't comment, but typically asked, it's been real challenging if you look at the blip in these past two years, right? These are our October 1 numbers. If we did not have the pandemic, you would have seen what I think has been a flat line, right? That increase or slight uptick of enrollment, that was what we projected. But what happened, and that's where you saw the blip, is you did have some folks pull their students out, homeschool some of their children, and it was more related to COVID and the pandemic. We're seeing a resurgence, though, we're seeing kids come back, and I certainly think with some of the housing opportunities that are kind of going to become available, and certainly some of the transportation that's going to be available, I can only see the district enrollment, both in Freetown and Lakeville, continue. I tried specifically not to reference transportation in too much length and look over at Mrs. Fox, because she's going to say, once again, he's got into that.
The third time.
But I, but I say it as in a true compliment, when you look at the opportunities that families will have to live in these two great towns, have a foundation, a solid education, and be able to work and navigate up to Boston and those other communities, it's really, it's a plus, it's a positive. But I do think that, I think it's going to have to be something with the district moving forward looks at closely as it relates to space at our two elementary schools, and then obviously on the campus here. I think it's going to be something in addition to probably an upcoming capital project, if I were to forecast on the campus as it relates to turf and facilities and things, some things that are going to happen, that are not included in this budget, but I think probably project out in future plans. So our enrollment, I think you'll continue to see just a slight uptick, and that's just the breakdown by community. There really isn't a necessarily, I don't see a trend where one town is seeing numbers go up higher than others. I do think what is very challenging, and I came from a district that had that, it's some sometimes difficult, it is easy to see the new houses, right? The things that are being built. The turnover is a challenge, though, right? To determine what families that are turning over, and I, you know, my previous district, that was always a real challenge. They weren't building, but yet enrollment was going up, and it was a result of houses turning over in communities and families coming in with children. And I think the district is gonna have to look very closely at enrollment in the coming years and the impact it's gonna have on the budget. But we feel very comfortable based on the numbers that we see, that our budget that's being presented tonight is certainly in line with the needs of meeting our kids. Again, this is our school choice. Once again, this school system and this district supports and voted once again to be a school choice, a school district. We had 62 students in 2021. We projected, I think we had, Renee, this afternoon? 10 applications to date with a deadline of coming up of April 8th. So we project, I think we projected 20 students or 20 slots in that range based on, and we kept away from the K-3 piece. We were looking at the upper elementary through middle school and high school, three slots per grade. There can be some adjustments made. Mr. Strauss and I will have some, in one of our many conversations, we'll talk about that process as it relates to bringing potential more students in. But I give, you guys were, when I say you guys, I say the towns of Freetown, Lakeville, we're ahead of the curve as it relates to taking on this. If you noticed, many more school districts have jumped into the fray of school choice as increased revenue. This district has been doing it for some time, and I think one of the luxuries that we've had is we have the space to accommodate that and maintain our priority of class size, but bring students in from surrounding communities. And I can tell you, almost on a weekly basis, we get calls as it relates to, is there any possibility of having our kids come to school here? So we'll continue to be school choice and the enrollment's reflected there. And obviously, the revenue is able to offset and help with the assessment for the towns. So as we summarize and wrap up tonight, and I'm pretty much stayed a chart, I probably went a few moments, I apologize. The budget increase is a 3.62% increase. The budget that I'm recommending tonight, that will hopefully be voted on by the school committee on April 6th, is $43,340,701. Next steps through this timeline, once this budget goes through, as I've referenced there at the next slide, some key dates I've referenced. We hear the 23rd at the public budget hearing. I'll be happy to answer any questions. April 6th, the school committee will take formal action. There's a requirement with the next number of days to do that prior to town meeting. Keeping in mind, Lakeville's town meeting is much earlier. It's May 16th. The town of Freetown has their meeting on June 6th. But we feel at this point, and we'll be open to any conversations and dialogue with town officials or boards prior to the vote, but also after that time. We've already made a commitment. Both Kara and I have talked to town officials. If there are adjustments and additional revenue coming in the state, we'll make some adjustments to the assessment, right? Some reductions there as well. I don't envision there's gonna be a tremendous adjustment made, but we would agree that we could make those adjustments and help out the towns if, in fact, we do receive additional funding from the state. And I think that's the last slide, other than I couldn't get away with one more, raise the bar kind of coming through there. I'd be happy to answer questions. I know most of the folks that are here informational. I don't know if any board members would like to add anything. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Renee, my administrative assistant, who really runs the district. You folks know that. So the person who's really in charge isn't retiring. You guys know that. The board, I've referenced Kara's due diligence. I want to thank my director's phenomenal job. There's no question about the numbers and the transparency, and I think town officials have made note of that privately and publicly. And we'll put this up on our website. We'll give you the breakdown and line items and do everything we need to do to make sure that you folks know that we're gonna do what's best for your kids. We're thrilled about with some sense of normalcy. So excited to see the kids back and maybe hopefully enjoy some normalcy this spring as we roll into graduation and all the exciting times that are happening.
Ms. Barron has a question.
I had a community member ask, the McKinney-Ventro Transportation, how many students do we have utilizing that?
Ms. Curran, can I put you on the spot?
Quite frequently. Under a dozen.
Under a dozen.
Yes.
Do you have any production, you have no projections ahead?
We cannot project.
Okay, so that's homeless families, or students that are classified as homeless, for those that maybe don't know that. Thank you. Other questions?
I will just say that over your history, Rick, I think one of the things that have made this an easier process over the years is the budget book has, if I can go far as I say, has been dumbed down, right? It has been, I remember in years, you almost had to cross-reference different sections and everything else, and I think it was just a huge effort from the admin team, from yourself and the rest of the team, of making this a very clear project. That's what it is. It's a really good start to see where the money is going, what is being offset, what have you. So I remember there was a number of years that that was a big question, so.
Thanks, Ms. Owen. You folks do know that I had to do that, so I understood it, right? Those first few years. And then I realized, once I could figure it out, then maybe I could communicate that. I'd like to think that I've been able to do that in adequate fashion.
Just the cost savings alone of going from a three-inch binder down to a one, I think will help next year, so.
Yeah, we could do that.
But thank you.
Supply chain. Okay. All right.
So we have some exciting times ahead, and we've got the budget vote at our next school committee meeting. But if there are questions that come up, and I'll encourage people, we'll put this up on our website, be up there tomorrow morning, in addition to all the detailed background as well that folks may have.
Well, I also want to thank you for reaching out to the town so that they can have these conversations, because Ms. Petty and I have had several, and her whole goal is just to understand it. You know, the support is there, and I know it is, but knowing, you want to know what you're talking about. And certainly, to Mr. Owen's point, this is a whole lot easier than what we used to get. It really was a very, you need a translation service.
I mean, this is helpful, but because of transparency, right? If somebody asks me a question, I want to be able to.
Yes.
So that is why I'm here tonight, just so I have information. And, you know, I always say that I'm a facilitator, right? All I do is gather the information and disperse it where it needs to go. So I'm here for that. We have had meetings, and what a phenomenal job. That book is a huge undertaking, and it is a piece of artwork.
It is.
So, Mrs. Fox, I was simply gonna add, I'm thrilled, I need the board to know as it ties into this budget. Mr. Strauss and I have had a couple of conversations prior to this. We are extremely excited, and I say collectively, the two of us, to sit down and start to make this transition as smooth as possible. I think the district is in great hands with my successor coming through. We talked about some, we were talking about visibility, communication, commitment to the community. And so I think we're gonna have an exciting next few months, and I applaud the committee for doing their due diligence and going through that process and giving us this opportunity. It's March, so the fact that we have April, May, and June, and then some summertime potentially, to be sure that we're in a good place for the fall, I think allows for that transition. So I know he's probably already looking to see if I've already emailed him, because he's already asked me for times and dates and when we could do that. But I just want to reassure people that we're gonna make sure that that transition works for everybody.
Thank you.
And I'm excited about that.
Thank you for that. Oh, yes. Thank you for that. We're saying farewell to a board member who is not running again, but who has been such an important, vital, and energetic part of this committee. So Laura Ransdon, thank you for everything you brought to the table over these years. We'll miss you, but we know you'll be coming to lots of meetings. Yeah. So thank you for all your years of service. You have been an incredibly valuable member of this team.
Well, I want to thank all of you. I thank you for your friendship and your support all of these years. I think that the thing I am most grateful for is that no matter when we disagreed on subjects, we always kept the kids at the focus, and we all collaborated and worked together for the best outcomes for our students. That's what I'm most proud of, so I thank you all for that.
Well, we'll miss you. Did I miss anything else?
Can we bring back the events list?
Yeah, where is that? Because I don't know when everything, yeah.
You need to read the superintendent's court.
We could do that, especially in light of the spring.
Yeah, no.
Well, that's, I think, why you should bring it up.
You know what happened? I think what got left off, COVID turned this into a lack of events.
Exactly. No, I agree. That's why I'm saying. And then, I'm gonna put on my Mr. Clark hat. Any chance that we can bring back some semblance of the senior breakfast or what have you?
I am shocked when Andrea Fay was here that that didn't come up in conversation, because I was definitely thinking that. I don't know what restrictions or what limitations. I can't imagine we couldn't probably take a look at that as the season, spring comes along, the weather gets a little bit better. I'm sure we could accommodate that and set something up, so.
Spice it up a little this year.
As compared to last year, or?
Stop.
We could definitely raise the bar.
Real eggs.
Yeah, exactly.
Real eggs.
Oh, come on.
We'll take a look at that. I'll have some conversations, see if we can put something together. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I believe the business of this meeting is concluded.